The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Tonight is Monday, August 19th, 2019. It's 7:00 PM. To begin our meeting, I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Morant will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. This evening, we're going to lead off with a presentation. It's titled "The Trail Gap Closure: The DOT Staff." At this point, I'll turn it over to Town Manager Lee, and he'll do some introductions, and then we'll move forward with the presentation. Robert?
This evening, we have representatives from the Department of Transportation who are responsible for designing the trail, as it was at least approved by the council, which was often at C. And so Scott Bushy heads up the team. He's here to introduce his team members, as well as give a PowerPoint presentation, which will last 15 or 20 minutes, and then he would answer any questions that the council may have for him. He also indicated that they would stay for the remainder of the meeting as well. So with your permission, I'd like to ask Scott Bushy to step forward.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So I'm Scott Bushy with the Department of Transportation. With me tonight, I have Vitaly Staroverov, who's the project engineer, and Ahmed Kedim, the designer on the project. A little bit about us, we're from the DOT's Highway Design Unit. Our history is really related to highway design. Our projects typically we work on are intersection safety projects, curve realignments for highways, interstate interchanges, culverts. And a few years ago, we had an opportunity to work on Farmington Canal, Heritage Trail in Cheshire, Connecticut, and work on the gap closure in Cheshire. And it was a great experience, very rewarding, very exciting, something I enjoyed very much. And when this opportunity came up, I asked our management if Vitaly and I could also work on this one. And I'm look forward to working with your community to get a trail through in Plainville. Also, a little bit about us, we're state employees. We will be the ones working on the design. So if I'm here with you today talking about it, we're the ones actually doing the work. We're not going to be overseeing consultants that are doing the work, or consultant office who's not with me. It's the three of us here in the room today that are going to be doing the bulk of the design work on the trail. Just a little bit about the trail, high-level overview. Plainville really has two significant trail sections going through as looking at a gap closure. One is Farmington Canal Heritage Trail. That starts in Northampton, Massachusetts, and goes all the way down to New Haven Harbor. That was originally the canal, and it was built for shipping. There was barges in the canal towed by Oxen that were brought down to New Haven for goods and supplies, brought back up to Northampton. That since was moved into railroad and then trail. It's also part of East Coast Greenway, which goes from Maine to Florida. It's a much bigger initiative, and the Plainville section provides connectivity to that type of trail. I learned at a convention last year in Boston on East Coast Greenway that it's ultimately called the Urban Appalachian Trail. And East Coast Greenway, for anyone not familiar with it, is something that was initiative started over 20 years ago in providing continuous bike and pedestrian corridor from Maine to Florida along the East Coast. And over the last 20 years, it's been getting built a mile or two at a time, and it's moved significantly towards completion. You know, there's still a lot left to do, but in a relatively short period of time, there's been a lot of trail constructed. I mean, almost everyone in this room has probably gone out at some point and walked on a trail somewhere, ridden a bike, or your family has. And a lot of that came out of the East Coast Greenway initiative that started 20 years ago. So just recognizing, two of these major corridors are coming together going through Plainville. It's a really great opportunity. Little bit about the history for Vitaly, Ahmed, and I. This is the trail we worked on in Cheshire, just giving you an overview on some of our experience. So we designed a 14-foot-wide boardwalk with hand railings for bicycles and pedestrians. This was through a wetland area. It was very environmentally sensitive. The boardwalk has concrete treads. When you're walking on it, you don't feel it move. It's very sturdy. It will take emergency vehicles. In case someone's injured, you can run an ambulance on it. And the picture to the lower left, you know, shows this being completed and the type of usage that's on it. You have bicycle usage, people walking, and people in scooters. I've been out other times. There's been people with baby carriages jogging on it, families, kids with bikes. You know, so this is your trail user, quite a diversity in audience. Another section of the trail going through an industrial area. And I'm not saying this is what it's going to look like in your community, but this is our experience. These are opportunities that we have to try to work with you. On the left side of the picture, typical trail crossing. On the right side, this shows restroom facilities that we provided in Cheshire. The one on the top right is a precast unit with water and sewer hookup that we provided along the trail. It has two restroom units in it. It's got also a fountain on the outside for filling your water bottle. The one in the lower-left corner has composting-type restrooms, and that's something that would typically be used in a very rural environment, where you didn't have water and sewer connections. But something that worked out very well in that community and much appreciated by the trail users. The colors of those buildings can all be designed to the customer's preference. Few other sections of the trail pictures. On the top right shows areas we provided picnic tables, something we did for families. So if you want to take a break along the trail, have a snack with your kids, you know, you have those opportunities to stop along the trail. Get out of trail traffic and tie a sneaker with your kids, whatever you need. And to the right, you have some pictures of runners and walkers. The bottom left shows something kind of new to Connecticut. There's only two of these in service at this time. It has two names. It's called the Hawk Signal, or else also a PHB, Pedestrian Hybrid Beacon. And it's a pedestrian crosswalk. And you push the button, it goes yellow, then it goes flashing red, then it goes solid red. It stops traffic to allow pedestrians to safely cross, and then it goes flashing red. And during the flashing red, if the crosswalk is clear, vehicles can pass through. And this was something we installed in Cheshire on Main Street, West Main Street, Route 68 and 70, very, very heavy traffic volume area. And that's how we dealt with safe pedestrian crossing there. Other things we did on the trail, on the top-right corner, you see this beautiful landscaped area with grass and plantings. This is a Michaela's Garden, and we worked with the William Pettit Foundation to create an area for plantings. This had seeds from Michaela's Garden put in it. On the lower-left corner, near one of the parking lots, we designed, we worked with a community group that wanted to create butterfly gardens. So this is even just a year post-construction. We have these beautiful landscaped areas next to the parking lot with a butterfly garden that everyone can come and enjoy. And it worked out really well. And to the right, just some other areas of trail we designed. The bottom right shows kind of a rural area. It's very, very beautiful. Okay, back to Plainville. And this is just a very high overview of status of where DOT is currently, and to give you a sense of what we've done so far and where we're going in the future. So Town of Plainville worked with Capital Region Council of Governments and a consultant VHB to do a study and come up with a trail alignment through Plainville. That study was concluded in February of 2008 and had several meetings, and ultimately a supporting vote from the council for an alignment C shown in the planning study. That's where I get involved. So shortly after that, Department of Transportation worked to initiate a project and find funding to support the trail alignment shown in a planning study. The project was at that point given to me as a designer and project manager. We got funding available about January 2019 for the design of the project, and we're six months later. Here's Alignment C. This is shown initially in the corridor study as one project, five miles long. Currently, it's funded as one project, five miles long. The design team started walking this alignment last winter, January, February, March, April. We've walked the whole thing, some of it two or three times, trying to get familiar with it, assess it. And this is what I've presented to Manager Lee. My recommendations are, moving forward, that we break this project up into three phases. And I think reason for doing that, there's a number of them. Some of these sections are more challenging than others and are going to take more time, more design time, and possibly more time in permitting, environmental permitting. I think it's to everyone's benefit if we take it in smaller pieces and try to get, advance it to construction sooner. So at least we have continuity in construction. You have a trail to the south of you in Southington that's coming up. It's currently in design. Design's almost done. Probably next year, that's going to be in construction. So the next logical phase to work on, what I have shown on the plan, is Phase 1, which would be from Southington to Norton Park. That keeps continuity in the trail progression going that's already going to be into construction soon. It's also logical to me to advance to construction the soonest because it doesn't have the neighborhood issues and local street issues to deal with that the other sections of trail have that I feel are going to take me more time to work through. This is mostly woods. It has the old tow path of the canal still intact. My feeling is we'll try to maximize as much of that for use of the trail alignment as we can. So I'm looking to advance that part to construction soon. Another reason is Norton Park is a logical place to stop a trail. If you have to take something into construction and extend a piece from Southington up to Plainville, it's nice to stop in a logical place where people have opportunity for parking or a place to access the trail and ride south. I think this section below Norton Park is going to get pretty heavy usage once it's built. It's a very rural area. It's very pretty. It's also a short walking stretch for somebody that wants to park in the park, walk south, have a nice walk in the woods, maybe a boardwalk section, and then come back to their car. You know, you'd probably get about two miles out of it in a short walk. I think that's something that your community would really enjoy. The sections to the north, what I have Phase 2 just below Farmington, that's probably the next simplest in design for us to try to advance to construction. And that also has some environmentally really nice areas. It's very scenic. It doesn't have the neighborhood streets to cross that we have in Phase 3, but it's going to have some environmental permitting problems, and it may take me a little bit longer to get that into construction with delays. And Phase 3, we've got a lot of neighborhood streets that are being used. That requires a lot of our time to do layout and studies and review properties and look at little tweaks along the way and see about dealing with traffic and try to make the crossing safe. And that one's going to take the longest time, I believe. So that's why we're looking to break this up into three phases. The exact limits of each phase, I'm not going to commit to you today. I think where the boxes are shown on the plan is a pretty good estimate, and that's what we're using as a starting point. And as we get through the design, those might fluctuate a little bit, and I'll keep you guys apprised of the status and where we are. Looking to the south. So this is Phase 1, and this is the section from Norton Park down to Town Line Road, which butts up from the trail coming up from Southington. And predominantly, this is mostly woods. And this, we're looking at probably spring 2022 for construction. Some of that's dependent on environmental permitting processes I have to go through and any cultural resources that may take time. But that's a target date at this point. Stakeholder coordination meetings. Part of the reason I'm here is to give you guys an update status of where DOT is, but also let you know who we've been talking with over the past six months. So I started working on the project in January of 19, about six months ago. First meeting we had was at DOT Headquarters. It was with Plainville Greenway Alliance and the Capital Region Council of Governments, just to review the planning study that was done, all the work that was done developing the planning study, the history, try to get the design team up to speed before we initiate the project. The second meeting I had was at the Town Hall with Manager Lee, several of your town officials, and the Capital Region Council of Governments. Purpose of the meeting was really to introduce the design staff at DOT, get conversations going, hear concerns from the town. Third meeting we had was in February with Connecticut Motor Cars and Motor Coaches. That meeting was specific to discuss with that property owner DOT initiating survey work on his property, so we could begin the design work we need for the trail. Next, into March, we had another meeting at the Town Hall to discuss the landfill capping project and how that might affect the trail. We had Connecticut DEP here, Manager Lee, other town staff, and the Capital Region Council Government that works on the trail study. In May, at DOT, out of stakeholders' request in your town, we had a meeting with a resident on Perrin Road to discuss neighborhood concerns that they had with the trail going through Perrin Road area. Also in May, we met with Carling Technologies and did a field walk on their property on where the proposed alignment is, shown in Alignment C, discussed any of the concerns that business had with putting the trail along their property frontage. In June, we met with Phoenix Soil, kind of similar conversation about where the trail might go through Phoenix Soil, any concerns they may have. We discussed the fact we might start surveying there soon. Again, in June, we were invited, DOT was invited, to a meeting with Old Mill Condominium Association at the Public Library. And similar information that's being presented here to you today was communicated with all the stakeholders so far. We also held a meeting in June that same day with East Coast Greenway and Plainville Greenway Alliance at DOT Headquarters, just to hear additional information they had for us. Again, in June, a follow-up meeting with Connecticut Motor Coach and Motor Car Business. Manager Lee asked me to summarize tonight the meeting I had with Old Mill Condominium Association in June 18, just so everybody's got the same information. And similar information was communicated to all the stakeholders we worked with, pretty much what you're seeing here tonight. To start with, I'm going to summarize concerns expressed from Old Mill Condominium Association to DOT at that meeting. So when we went to the meeting with Old Mill Condominium Association, there was an introduction about ourselves, our history, you know, we're willing to work with you. What are your concerns you have about the trail in your neighborhood? And this is what we heard. Number one, traffic concerns from the funeral home and safety concerns related to that about building a trail in that area. Concerns from residents about lack of involvement in the design process. You know, some residents felt like the trail was going to be on the condominium side of the street, and the design was all done, and there was no say in it, and they had no involvement. And I'll get to that after. But that was a concern they brought up. Also, safety and security concerns at the condominium complex. Access to Pierce Street from the driveway with trail traffic crossing over the driveway, trash and graffiti that trail users may bring to their neighborhood area, and then safety at several street crossings in the area. So what DOT communicated back to the Old Mill Condominium Association was that the project would be constructed in three phases, same plan I showed you here tonight. The design team clarified that we're really focusing on Corridor C, which was the result in the planning study that was supported by the council. We did discuss with that that we're open to looking at other alternatives within the general corridor of Alignment C. I'm not looking to go significantly east or west on other side of the town. That's already been resolved through the planning study. Minor adjustments within Corridor C. If someone has a suggestion they want us to look at, they think it's better, it's safer, I'm open. I certainly will look at it. We let everyone know the design is still at a concept level. I don't have survey yet, so our work so far has just been field walks. We're predominantly back in the office working on other design projects at this time. Our work so far on this trail has mostly been stakeholder discussions, community involvement, field walks, but not detailed engineering work because I don't have survey in hand yet. We discussed with Old Mill Condominium Association that we don't know what side of the street the trail's going to go on. We'll be looking at putting it on left side of the street, right side of the street. We also mentioned Pierce Street may be converted to one-way. That's an option, something we're willing to look at. And converting it to one-way, I think, does alleviate a lot of the safety concerns and traffic issues that were there, and also would provide a lot more room for the trail. All those discussions will happen at some point in time. We mentioned being willing to work on, look at other alternatives, and committed to share design concepts with the Old Mill Condominium Association as they're developed. Anticipated construction schedule for the three phases. Phase 1, 2022. Phase 3, 24. And the Phase 2, just south of Farmington, 2023. And I'm going to say those are just tentative dates for now. We'll have to see how the environmental permitting comes up. We'll have to see what suggestions are made, things we have to look at, and you know how much time we spend on each of these. But at the moment, based on design resources for Vitaly, Ahmed, and I, permitting challenges we have to go through with the design, you know, I think this is a good target to start with. And the nice thing about this is, once we get the southern piece into construction, the following pieces every year will have continuity. And through 2024, we'll be starting projects. So the next steps, and as I mentioned, I don't have survey in hand yet for any of these phases. It's currently being worked on. Phase 1, our surveyors have been out there this summer, working south at Norton Park, so we need to complete that survey. It's expected to be done in September. When I have the survey, then we're going to start looking at alignments. We'll be doing field walks with the regulatory agencies, looking at tweaking the alignment based on wetlands or cultural resource concerns that are brought up. Once we have something the regulatory agencies are satisfied with, we'll start a program for soil borings, confirm the preliminary design. We'll be doing more stakeholder meetings. I'll be out to do public information meetings where the community can comment on the project and the detail. We'll be beginning environmental permit stage, acquiring rights away, and then move into final design, and that will get us to construction in 2022. Phase 2, once we're complete with the survey on Phase 1, we're going to move the surveyors up to the airport and start working on survey for Phase 2. We'll be discussing environmental constraints in the area, working with regulatory agencies on the field alignment, and doing some more detailed work on challenging areas like the tunnel that's needed under Route 72. That's a pretty big structural effort that we have to complete, so we'll be getting on that sooner than later to ensure feasibility and get the structural design going. Phase 3, kind of similar process. I've got to move the surveyors from Phase 2. When they complete that, we'll move them down to the center of Plainville, start working on that. We'll be doing more field walks, assessing which side of the streets the trail seems to be best suited for. We've got a bridge across the river that's going to take some time to work out with the regulatory agencies. There's floodplain issues along the river with putting the trail that we've got to start talking about. And we'll be initiating some of those conversations soon, but I won't be able to give any detail until I get survey in the area. We'll be meeting with all the stakeholders and spending probably a lot of time with Pierce Street and Broad Street concerns. And at this time, if there's any questions?
Anybody from the council have any questions for Mr. Bushy about his presentation?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just have a couple. Mr. Bushy, could you just clarify for me? You mentioned earlier, tow path maximize as much as possible. Could you clarify? Is that you're talking about using the tow path?
Yes.
Preserving the tow path? What are?
It's both. So the tow path is a fill embankment that's adjacent to the canal. It's all man-made. This is not a natural structure that's there. And one side of the tow path is a water course. It's the canal. So that's not suitable for the trail, environmentally problems. The other side of the tow path, I had wetland survey done, and the bulk of that area, the wooded area, is all wetlands. And eventually, I'll bring a plan to Manager Lee to show where our soil scientists have come up with wetland delineation. And the location of the existing wetlands is strongly going to drive the alignment of the trail. And without having all those pieces, my engineering judgment is telling me the most logical place that the trail's going to end up is on top of the tow path because the tow path is not currently wetlands. The tow path is a cultural resource concern. It has historic value, and that's something that we'll be resolving with the State Historic Preservation Office. I'm going to be able to place a certain amount of fill on it. Some of it's actually just going to be recreating the tow path that's badly eroded and the width that was there originally. Some of that's going to be tolerated as not an impact to the cultural resource, and I'm going to have to work with that agency on that. But because the tow path is out of the wetlands, it's the most logical place to put the trail with respect to wetland permitting.
And then follow-up, on your next step slide for Phase 1, you skipped over historic coordination. Can you explain that?
Historic coordination will be involving the tow path. At least at this time, that's the historic resource that I'm familiar with. As we get a little further into the design, maybe something else will come up, but at the moment, I'm aware that that's a cultural resource, and I'll be working with the State Historic Preservation Office on that. They're going to want to look at my alignment, my cross-sections, how much fill we're placing in the area, and that'll be a discussion.
The reason I ask is, you know, obviously, that's a big part of Plainville's history. I know it's important to many people here. So obviously, I would hope in some historic coordination that we'll be able to celebrate some of Plainville's past, either through, you know, designated areas, signage, things like that, as you've done in other places. So I hope we can keep that going.
We certainly will. And when we come back for, if the trail ends up going on the tow path, and I'm saying if, when we come back for a public information meeting, we would have some indication of where signs would go and what they might look like. And that's something that we did in Cheshire as well. In Cheshire, we created some signs that showed the kind of the history of the canal, with it being the barges and then moving into the railroad and the multi-use trail, and put the dates to go with it. We also put signs for the historic locks, and it worked out nicely, educational component. You know, it actually brings a greater awareness to what was there previously and something that a lot of people wouldn't get exposed to.
Just one last question. When the traffic study was done on Pierce Street, was that done by VHB or the DOT?
I'm not aware of a traffic study that was done on Pierce Street. That's something that we will be doing as part of the design of the project.
Okay.
And when I say study, it's just going to be an evaluation of which side of the street seems to be the safest to put the trail based on driveways that we have to cross. And then we'll also be looking at Broad Street and Route 372, and spending some time on the crossing there too, to try to make it as safe as possible. And that's part of the reason I showed the pedestrian hybrid beacon, pedestrian hybrid signal we put up in Cheshire, was to give you an idea of what we did there. And that street's probably very similar in traffic volume to Route 372.
The reason I have is, obviously, since the funeral home opened, and I do have some involvement with that business, that it's, I've seen firsthand the traffic created at that intersection, and it's concerning. And you know, I know a lot of people think, well, funerals happen on Tuesday and Wednesday mornings, and they don't. Most of them happen on weeknights, you know, around 5:00 PM. So that's why I have a concern about that intersection. Obviously, I'm a supporter of the trail as a concept, but I do have some concerns about that area right there. Simply, I was speaking to Robert earlier today, it's really about the combination of pedestrians, cyclists, and traffic, motor vehicles. So I look forward to seeing what the potential is there to alleviate that.
You know, I'm going to be honest with you. I don't know where the trail's going to go in that area yet. It's going to take a lot of time and looking at a lot of alternatives to try to come up with the best case.
Sure.
And that's something we'll be working on with regularly with Manager Lee.
Thank you very much.
I have a quick question, and it's actually segueing off of the Pierce Street discussion.
I have a quick question, and it's actually segueing off of the Pierce Street discussion. Is there any chance at, and this is purely speculation, of course, as things start to evolve, that it wouldn't be on Pierce Street due to the fact of the business that's there, which is extremely busy, and just the layout of that street has, is that a possibility that it would not go down Pierce Street?
So I'm going to stick with what I told the Old Mill Condominium Association, and that the project is just at a concept level. I'm working off the alignment that was shown in the planning study, which shows Pierce Street, but I'm going to look at other suggestions that people give me that are in that general area, and I'll evaluate them. And we're going to look at what makes the most sense for pedestrian and bicycle safety, what makes the most sense for the community. We'll be having discussions with Robert Lee and the council, and we're going to work together as we move ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members?
Madam Chair? Yeah. So Whiting Street would be a possibility?
It's certainly something that we will look at, and I drove it twice tonight to take a quick look, and I looked at it because it was brought up last week by Old Mill Condominium Association. My initial feeling is that it's probably not as suitable with respect to safety because of the number of commercial curb cuts that are there. And if the town was really interested in moving the trail to Whiting Street, I think we'd have to have a conversation about removing the on-street parking on one side of the street to create the room for the trail. Because right now, the sidewalks are very close to the business openings. You have storefronts with doors opening. And when I come back to do more presentations, I'm going to give you some more slides showing typical trail usage and the people on the trail. And it's families with kids and bikes and moms with baby strollers, and I don't know if you really want that in that heavy trafficked area with the number of commercial driveways, people going in and out, crossing the trail. There's not a great place in that area to put the trail, so there's no obvious location. So we're going to have to look at a number of different ideas and then collectively agree on what seems the best for the town. So yeah, it's something we'll look at, but I'll tell you my initial reaction from a quick drive-through today. It's not as desirable from a safety perspective as Pierce Street. And I'm really interested to try to do a concept layout on Pierce Street and what I can do with minimizing any impact to adjacent property owners. I think if we can convert Pierce Street to one way, it'll create a lot of room for the trail and not impact any of the property owners except crossing some driveways. There's much fewer driveways on Pierce Street to cross than there is on Whiting Street, and the driveways that we are crossing would have much less traffic volume, so your percentage of conflict goes way down. The funeral homes are pretty strong concerns, so I'll just have to look in to see if I can find a solution for that. And I don't have one today, but after we get more time to work on that section, we'll find something.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Yep. Scott, if you can just kind of refresh everybody about where they can go online to see the study that was done and the maps of the alignment. I see quite a few new faces here tonight, which is great, and I just thought that might be worthwhile to share.
Okay. I believe it's available on the town of Plainville website, but it's also available on your regional planning agency, which is CROG. It's Capital Region Council of Governments. And if you go on their website, you'll find the trail study and all the history that was completed.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
As far as things like privacy and security in residential neighborhoods, how much input will those residents be able to give? And in that sense, will it be at stakeholder meetings, or should they be trying to schedule other meetings?
I'm always available to talk. If you look in just the first six months that I've been assigned to the project, we've met with at least a dozen individual persons or businesses or stakeholder groups. So I'm available. Anyone that wants a card tonight, I'm happy to pass them out at the end of the meeting. If anyone wants to send me an email with ideas, you want to meet and talk, I will do that. There's also going to be additional council meetings where DOT comes in. We present updates to the council about our findings. We're going to have public information meetings. There'll be opportunities at the public information meetings to talk. The public information meetings will be very well-publicized. Everyone that lives within 500 feet of the trail is going to get a direct mailing with notice of the public information meeting. It's also probably going to be on the town website, and it will also be in the local paper. But anyone that lives close is going to get a direct mailing.
Awesome, thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Bushy?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
Why don't you ask a question about the three phases and how that would work? Would you be looking for a council approval, say, on, you know, the Norton Park phase, the design phase alone, and then we would follow in subsequent years with the other two phases?
Yes. The way I would see this progressing, if we go back to the, to these sections, I'm going to start with phase one, Norton Park. I should have survey on that in September. We'll start doing detailed alignment work in October, probably some field walks with the regulatory agencies, maybe November through January, maybe talking about the different wetland areas and where we might be able to put the trail. Once we come up with an alignment that looks like it's meeting the needs of the regulatory agencies, I'll be back to speak with Manager Lee and get his input on it. And when he feels the time is right, we can come back to a council meeting and discuss. But ultimately, DOT will hold a public information meeting for that phase, send out direct mailings to everyone in the area. It'll be a meeting similar to tonight. It'll be open forum. At the conclusion of that, I'll be coming back to Manager Lee, looking for municipal support to move ahead into final design with the project. That typically, I typically do that on every project I work on. Come back, I'm looking to assess municipal support to move ahead. How the town decides to administer that, that's up to you. Sometimes the leadership gives us an okay at a meeting. Sometimes there's a vote. That's up to you guys.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you so much for coming to us this evening. And for the benefit of those in the audience, the staff and Mr. Bushy is going to stay at our meeting, and they'll be available after our public comment section. If people that come up during our public comment section later in our agenda have a question, we will have the questions recorded, and then Mr. Bushy and his team will be here to answer the questions for you. So those of you that are going to have some questions later on during the public comment section, they will be addressed at that time. So thank you again for coming this evening to explain an update to the council. Okay. We're going to move on with our agenda this evening. We do not have a public hearing, so I will ask for approval of the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes from July 15, 2019, special and regular meetings and August 1, 2019, special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Announcements or reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports? I know we're in summer session, so maybe there isn't a lot going on, but I'll ask anyway. Anybody have anything? Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Of course. Mary.
You always have something. Conservation Commission actually does meet in the summer.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah, okay. Unfortunately, I was not able to make their meeting last week, but I'd been in touch with Marge Burris, the chairperson, and so she just filled me in. Something that they planned when they met earlier this month is they are going to be at the balloon festival this year. They're going to have a table set up adjacent to that of the Pecquabic River Watershed Association. So people going to the balloon festival, be sure to stop by the Plainville Conservation Commission booth. And I think they're going to be giving away reusable bags too. So that's a good thing. And they're also planning a Pecquabic River cleanup for September 28, 9 through noon for people who wish to volunteer, and are tentatively planning some for the later fall, some cleaning up around Paderoski Pond. Yeah. And other than that, I know that we both attended, and Ty too, the dedication of the plaque for Betty Bokas at the pavilion, which I thought was very nice.
It was nice. Very well done. Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just wanted to mention that I did attend some of the functions for the 150th anniversary.
Right.
And I think everybody that was involved in that did a great job, and it was unfortunate it was so hot. But, you know, maybe it would have been a little bit more enjoyable a couple other places, but I went to the Historical Society, that was great. And I went and stood in the corner and listened to all the church bells going on Saturday. That was really something. So, you know, there was a lot of work put into that, and I think it was great.
Good. Anybody else have anything to add? I will just segue off of Councilwoman Maranti that we did attend the dedication of the plaque in honor of State Representative Elizabeth Bokas at Norton Park last week. She was instrumental as our state rep, gaining tremendous amount of funding from the state to improve all of our parks. And the Parker Recreation Commission created a very nice plaque, which is on one of the buildings that faces the playground area. She was also, the playground was a big piece of some of the grant money that she was able to obtain. So it was a very nice ceremony, and the Bokas family were present, and it was nice to see them again. I will also touch very quickly on the fact that this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday is the Hot Air Balloon Festival at Norton Park. Sounds like there's going to be some great weather, lots of people, lots of things to do. So if you have an opportunity, it's a wonderful event, and our fire department does a great job in organizing it and managing it. So if you can, please attend. There are shuttle buses available in order to move people around. I believe they come from the high school. Is that right? You're on the committee.
I'm on the volunteer.
I think shuttle buses are at the high school.
High school and the airport.
And the airport, because there is no real parking at the park any longer due to the fact that there's so very many thousands of people that attend. So if you're interested, you can easily hop on a bus, get down, and then they'll take you back to your car, and pretty easy to get there. So if you're around this weekend, please stop by and visit with our fire folks and take a look at the fireworks on Friday evening, and the hot air balloons will be there during the weekend. So something to do if you're not already busy with things. All right. We will, moving on now to the rest of our agenda, we have some appointments and resignations. So I have number one.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the retirement of Mark Cahill from the Plainville Fire Department.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments on the motion? I would just add, Robert, when these folks retire from the fire department, does the town typically give, send them a letter of appreciation and thanks? Or is there, you know, I don't remember with the others that have retired, if we give them proclamation. I'm not, I can't remember.
Well, I believe that Mark received a service award over the last year or so. So yes, there is a letter that will go out.
Okay. Just as long as he knows the council appreciates his many years of service as a volunteer. We appreciate that. Okay, if there are no other comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
A motion to accept with regret the resignation of Michael DeRozier from the Conservation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other appointments or reappointments that are not listed for this evening? Okay, thanks. Moving on. Board of Education, do we have a report here tonight? I don't think so. Okay. Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us tonight? Okay, thank you. All right, Robert. Part of the town manager, your turn.
I do have a couple of items. The first one is the Valley Water Systems update. In May of 2018, Tye and Bond issued a study entitled Valley Water Hardness Removal Evaluation. The study evaluated alternatives for lowering the hardness concentration in the valley water distribution system. Don Vaughn, President of Valley Waters, is here this evening to update the town council on their plans to address the hardness issue in their system. With your permission, I'd like to ask Mr. Vaughn to step forward to the podium and give the council an update.
Thank you, council, for having us here tonight. I have with me Bob Gallo, who works for Valley Water. He's an engineer, and he's been working with me in this project. But what I'd like to do, and I don't want to take too much time, I like to make my comments as brief as possible, but I'd like to give you a little background on, you know, the whole last three or four years or so. I think that might be helpful for everybody. Some of you may know, you know, what has transpired, but let me kind of fill in some of the blanks here. But like any other communities, or many other communities, our source water is very hard. In fact, it is classified as very hard. While it has been safe and reliable over the years, the fact of the matter is that it has had some aesthetic issues, which I think have been well chronicled. And these aesthetic issues come from many number of things, but they manifest themselves through scaling, spotting, and pretty much a inconvenience to many people. Now, that said, or other people that don't recognize that is inconvenient. They believe that the water is not an issue at all. And so we have a couple of competing groups here as part of our water customer base. Just a little bit of the history that's been associated with hard water. Over the past three or four years or so, we've had complaints about hard water and the effects that have been channeled through social media. To the point where we've had meetings with town officials, and we've had two public forums to review the hard water issue. Some of those public forums, actually, there have been two. One was fairly well-attended, and one didn't have the attendance that we would like to have seen. But in any event, you know, the people had, and our customers had the opportunity to speak and voice their opinions and preferences. Even though we have not had the complaints as such, and DPH has had very few complaints, we wanted to take a step forward. And we wanted to maybe initiate a customer survey, which we did. Last year, we engaged a research firm, a public research firm, to measure the preferences and complaints and, you know, desires of the customer base. We hired the firm on an independent basis. As a matter of fact, they composed the questions, they sent out the questionnaire, and they compiled all of the results, excuse me, independently of us. The results of that, the survey came back, and we probably had about 18% of our customer base respond. That was regarded as a fairly good sample base by the research firm. There was approximately 5,600 customers that we have, and slightly over 1,000 people responded. We gathered those results as they were presented by the research firm, and about 44% of the respondents were willing to pay for softening, while 56% were not. So we took those results, and we decided that internally, that, you know, we didn't quite have a mandate. We didn't regard that vote as a mandate. Some of these results came back, as a matter of fact, they compose the questions, they Some of these results came back, as a matter of fact, all of these results came back with the information that we had given to them that if we did build a softening plant, there'd be roughly an 18% increase in rates. And that was kind of the best estimate at the time, not knowing particularly the engineering or the techniques or anything else. So, we decided that we would proceed with some softening. We were proposing some softening because we felt that, as I said before, there wasn't a decided overwhelming vote one way or the other. We, as a matter of fact, the 56%, some of that claimed that there was no problem at all. I think there was maybe about 48% that said that they were not willing to pay for a softening plant. Because we didn't believe the survey results were a clear mandate, as I said, we are proposing to build a, an ion exchange plant at a Woodford Ave. Wellfield. This type of plant has been identified by a consultant, which was Ty and Bond, which the manager referenced, is the most cost-effective type of treatment that we could install to soften our water. As a matter of fact, subsequent to that, we met with DPH last week and presented an overview of what we had proposed and what Ty and Bond had proposed, which was the ion exchange plant. And they were supportive of that effort. At this point, however, we haven't had any, we have not done, gone any further with our project other than interview on a preliminary basis, three or four consultants to set up a potential RFP. We've done a little bit of work. Bob Gallo, who I mentioned earlier, has done the most part of setting up those RFPs, but we have not gone any further. However, we are working with the Health Department and we've got some preliminary other testing to do. I have to be as straightforward and as forthcoming as I can that coincident with this proposed softening plant, we've got to prepare for a general rate increase. We haven't had a rate increase since 2010. So, we would have possibly a, an increase as a result of a softening plant as well as a general rate increase. So, that is information that I wanted to make sure that the council understood and that if we did go forward, we would be, you know, be potentially having that rate increase. And I would estimate right at this point would be around 2021, somewhere there. So, it would be a little bit off, but a rate increase would and will undoubtedly have to take place. So, Bob here could maybe get up and answer or provide some of the technical details of the plant to the extent that you think that they might be helpful. And then I think, you know, we'd be available for questions when, you know, as you see appropriate.
Kathy.
Thank you. Yes.
Don, just a couple of items. One is that the original study, when you talked about the 18% was involving an ion exchange system at both Wellfields. Is that correct? So, you're proposing to just do it at one Wellfield, which certainly would be less expensive than doing it at both of them. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. And I neglected to say that, but I think that what we would be doing is taking a measured step.
Right.
If we, if we proceed, you know, if the planets align here, we would take a measured step and I believe that we could do an awful lot of softening with a plant that might be a little bit bigger at Woodford Ave. Wellfield.
And the Woodford Ave. Wellfield is the one that has a slightly harder water than the Johnson Avenue one to begin with, so it would make sense.
Yes, it does.
And most, at least most of the more serious concerns that have been addressed, although they've been, you know, throughout the community, but they, a lot of them have been concentrated in the southeast portion of the town as well, which is mostly fed by the Woodford Avenue Wellfield.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And we also had some preliminary discussion about timing of this, that, you know, if all things, you know, when as you, as you had, you know, anticipate, that you could be talking about the installation of this system perhaps, you know, sometime in 2020.
That's correct, again. If we, if we can proceed, if we have an understanding, not only from DPH, but also from PURA, and PURA has been part of the whole process, they've attended virtually all the meetings, they've attended the two public forums that we had. So, we think that the engineering and design and specifications could occur sometime, I want to say late this year, we might be optimistic, but certainly by the early spring, you know, we could expect that we would have that part of the process finished and then we would go out for bids, construction bids and so forth in 2020. So, I think that would be the timing and there'd be a lot of moving parts here that are going on. So, I think that's a reasonable timeframe.
And any rate increase is subject to PURA, which is a state agency that takes into account your costs, you know, your construction costs, your operating costs, your planning costs for going forward, and puts that all into some type of formula. Questions, you know, you have to answer a lot of questions with respect to, you know, where you're going with your, you know, with your operation and they eventually make the decision with respect to what your increase, what increase they would grant you after, after at least one public hearing, perhaps more than one public hearing. So, this isn't just something where Valley Water decides, okay, this is going to be our rate increase and oh, by the way, here's the bill. It's, there's a very formal process that takes in, takes all that into account.
Yeah. That's absolutely correct. It's a process that we have not been involved in, again, since probably 2009. We have a public hearing here. We also have an evidentiary hearing in New Britain and it's a lengthy process to the, to and I would say about seven to eight months. And they will look at our operating expenses, they look at capital expenses, you know, they will look at water mains that we put in, pump stations that we've rebuilt, and they will consider whether they are so-called prudent, used and useful. They go through all this criteria and then they will, they will ask maybe a couple of hundred data requests and, you know, we have to respond to them and they become part of the evidentiary hearing. So, it's a, it's a lengthy process and everybody has input.
And Don, you know, you're one of, you know, many water systems that are, you know, throughout the state of Connecticut, you know, serviced by, in many communities. And I know that you're very familiar with what the rates are charged by other water systems as well and how they compare to Valley Water. Could you just expand on that a little bit? I mean, you know.
Sure.
Where you rate, for example, where you stand with respect to other water systems in the state of Connecticut?
Sure. Our rates right now fall in the lower third of private water companies in the state. So, we've been able to contain costs and we, you know, we, monthly, we review our financials, you know, our operating expenses and so forth. But as a result, we pretty much have our water rates under control and they, as I said, they're in the lower third in the state.
Okay. Just wanted to at least set that table discussion.
That's good information. As we met a few weeks ago, Robert and Don and your staff met, we also talked about the plan going forward of some public relations information to be sent out to your customers so that they understand what you're doing. This is a, this is in response to some of the issues that have been brought to you from your customers. So, I think it's a, it's a very positive step forward. Everybody will understand, hopefully, as this evolves, that there will be some rate impact on the customers of Valley Water. But you haven't had a rate increase since 2009 or 10?
2010 it was affected.
So, that's, it's a fair, fair amount of time. And I think that if it's going to benefit and answer some of these complaints that some of these, some of your customers have been expressing, I think it's important to do some public outreach and, you know, public information just so people understand that you are addressing some of these things and how this is going to impact them going forward.
Right. That's exactly right. And, excuse me, we've been disseminating some information. We continue to do that and that's part of our process, our PR process. We want to inform the customers as well as we can, give them as much information as we can. The rate increase that we'll have is going to be highly developed and publicized. We want to make sure everybody has an understanding. We're available for questions at any time. But one of the things that we have, which goes back to the hardness issue, is the, the social media, which is a way of life these days. You know, that's how things happen. They get done for better or for worse, but the social media persists. And, you know, we want to be good citizens, we want to be contributing to the town. And so, this is one of the reasons why we are pushing this forward. We think this is an opportunity to do something that probably should have been done many, many years ago. And it's a great time, it's an opportune time to do it, particularly when our rates are relatively low. We can mitigate to the extent that it's possible, you know, the so-called rate impact. So, we're pushing forward and we're going to keep going until somebody says no.
Well, Don, many people have expressed the impact that the hard water has had on their fixtures and their, you know, their appliances and that, and that has cost them money. So, by softening the water, presumably, there will be some savings with people not having to, you know, replace some of their fixtures and appliances as quickly as they have in the, in the past, at least they said they have, as well as there's a lot of people won't drink the water because of the hardness. And so, presumably, by softening the water, people will be more likely to drink the water and not buy, you know, buy water. So, there's certainly some potential savings there. So, it is, the, you know, the fact that there's a rate increase associated with this type of improvement doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, that there won't be some savings to offset that, you know, that, that rate, you know, that rate increase as well.
We feel also the same way. We should be able to get a lot more mileage, as an example, out of hot water heaters. You know, that's a common complaint, that hot water heaters don't outlast a warranty. And so, this should be something that helps everybody, not to mention the kind of subtle effects on, you know, dishware, glassware, scaling, that kind of thing. So, all in all, we think that this is going to be a benefit. And largely, this is basically a, a public relations communications initiative that we have. Not everybody's going to want this, but we feel like there is enough support behind it where we are going to proceed, as I said, until somebody says no. We're prepared to bring us to PURA, discuss that with them on a preliminary basis, as well as we'll be ongoing with DPH on questions and answers. They'll have a continual review of the plans and whatever we do.
Okay. Before, I know you have a team member that's going to say a few words to us, but what I'd like to do is ask the council if they have any questions for Mr. Vaughn before he turns it over to his team member. About the idea? No questions? Okay. You've done a good job then.
Bob Gallo may have a couple of points, maybe.
Okay.
Well, first of all, does anyone have any questions other than what Donna spoke about?
Yeah. Yes.
No, 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 wait, wait.
No questions for the council?
Talk to the council.
You can, we can ask those later, just from the council at this point. That's, then we will have, answer questions further in our meeting for things such as that.
I can give you just a, kind of a base understanding of what the treatment process is.
Okay.
That's what you're, if you want.
Yes, perfect. I was going to ask that.
Okay. Well, as Don mentioned, consultants had suggested an ion exchange system. Now, there's generally three types of systems that are, that are out there. There's a reverse osmosis, there's a lime soda ash softening, and then there's ion exchange. The reason we're choosing, or the consultants have chosen ion exchange is because the waste products are much less. For instance, with the lime soda ash softening, you have to actually get rid of solid waste, whereas with the ion exchange, we would be able to just pump it out through the sewer system. Also, the ion exchange system is a reduced cost. And what it involves, just quickly, is that we treat part of the water and then we do what's called a side stream, where we bypass some of the water and then we mix the non-hard water in with, you know, the raw water to lower the hardness. As far as the hardness levels go, as Don mentioned, it's very hard here in Plainville. Hard water is typically considered hard when it's above 150 parts per million or milligrams per liter. What we're going to be shooting for is about 100 and that should solve a lot of the problems. You don't want to go too soft with the water because that can cause other issues, including pH problems and corrosion issues. So, so the consultants we spoke to, who are specialists in this, you know, treatment design, also suggested a target hardness of 100 milligrams per liter.
And just to put that in perspective, the current hardness of that well is well over 200, it's somewhere in the 275 range.
Yeah, it's a high 200.
So, while, so while 150 is considered very hard, you know, I've joked, maybe not so jokingly, but I've said to Don, it's not very, it's not very hard water, it's very, very hard water.
It is.
So, you know.
And the, and the 150 target that previously discussed, you know, we wanted to go a little bit lower than that.
Yep.
And just to, you know, and to say, you know, it's not going to be, you know, completely, you know, it's not going to be hardness-free water by any means. So, you will notice, you know, a sharp decline in scaling on your fixtures and those sorts of effects that hardness would normally have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gallo with the explanation of how this is going to work? From the council?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah. I think I recall from looking at the study that the ion exchange has a fairly lengthy track record too of being used in a lot of locations.
It does, well, it's.
And used successfully, if you can comment on that?
Yeah, it's actually very similar to a water softening system that you would have in your own home. That's an ion exchange system. It's where, you know, you have, you have a media that the water is passed through, you know, the calcium and magnesium is what makes the water hard and it sticks to the media in the softener. And then once that gets exhausted, then you backwash the media, freshen it up, and it's ready to treat more water. So, it's same process.
Is it used anywhere in Connecticut? Something I had meant to research after I looked at the study and it.
Actually, on a scale of this size project, the consultants we spoke to and our research, we don't think it's been done in New England at all.
Okay. But in other parts of the country?
It has.
It has been done?
You know, parts of the country where there's more limestone geology, like for instance, Florida, they have some of these plants down there. So, it has been done in other parts of the country.
Right. It seemed I recall that it did say that it had, it had a history and had a track record. Thank you.
I'll sit, Rosemary.
I'll sit.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I would ask during our public hair, public comment section, there may be folks that have some questions if they could stay and help us out with that. Do you think you could stay a little bit longer, Don and your crew? There may be some questions from our public comment section that you would be able to answer for us, so if you don't mind a little bit longer.
No problem.
Okay. Thank you all both for, for the information. I'm sure there's lots of people that are going to be very interested in this solution that you're proposing. So, we appreciate you coming tonight and explaining it to us. Thank you. Okay, Rob.
Well, we also anticipate that there will be opportunities going forward when there's more information available that where people will have the opportunity to, you know, get better answers. Right now, it's on a preliminary basis.
Sure.
Any questions this evening may be difficult to answer going beyond what has already been presented. already been presented. Next item I have is T-Mobile proposal generator at the firehouse. The town currently has a lease with T-Mobile for their communication tower located at the rear of the firehouse. The current lease guarantees a monthly payment of $2,250 through January 2027. T-Mobile would like to install a generator adjacent to their cell tower. Information regarding the proposed location was included in the meeting information package. T-Mobile is proposing to increase the rent payment by $200 per month as well. The generator would operate in lieu of the battery backup system currently in place. The firehouse also has a separate generator to run a portion of the building during power outages. This generator does not provide power to, to the T-Mobile communication tower. If there is no objection, town staff with the assistance of the town attorney will work with T-Mobile to finalize the arrangements for the installation of the generator. I have shared, there has been conversations with the chief officers about the location. You know, they, they've seen all of the, you know, proposal. They realize that there's limited, you know, putting the generator next to the tower just, you know, makes sense, and there's really not any other place to put it than where they proposed it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask Robert a question?
Sure.
Robert, I know when we talked about that before, you said that where the generator's going to be, it's not going to impede any of the equipment in the firehouse, and it's not going to get in the way of any of the firemen, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so do you think the 200 a month additional is a little low? Do you think we could get a little bit more?
It's hard to say, but certainly that's, that's their starting point. It certainly isn't necessarily our ending point.
Okay.
I just didn't want to have those discussions, you know, until at least the council is, was aware of it, and, and, you know, if you, you know, if you had any, you know, objections to allowing them, you know, to put the generator there. But I'll certainly have some more conversation with them about the, what they propose for rent. I think we can get a little bit more out of them.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about this portion? Okay, thank you.
Our next item we have is the financial dashboard. And before reviewing the first month of fiscal year 2020, Finance Director Robert Budin has provided some preliminary numbers regarding fiscal year 19, which ended June 30th. He was projecting that fiscal year 19 will result in a surplus of approximately $1 million. This includes revenues exceeding what was budgeted by approximately $426,000, with a good portion of that amount coming from delinquent tax collections, building permits coming in above what was estimated, and the closing of several projects. Expenditures are estimated to come in under budget by approximately $605,000, with the majority of that amount coming from staff turnover, where somebody leaves, and it take, may take several months to, you know, fill the position. So there's, there's savings there. We've had several of those over, over the last year. And some electricity savings that have occurred as well, better than what we anticipated. This amount is partially offset by the additional appropriation of $290,000 that was made in June. Scott Colby will now review the first month's results of fiscal year 20, and I know you have the, some preliminary information about fiscal year 19 that gives, gives a little further explanation of what I've just put forth, but I'd like to turn it over to Scott to review the first month, which, which he'll be very brief because it's the first month.
So just going over the first month, we're just going to be looking at the general fund. Revenue and finance are still working on closing out fiscal year 19, so we won't have anything to report on the special funds or any of the projects. Looking at the town budget, we're coming in at about 17.28%, while general government's coming in at about 17.81%. And the Board of Education coming in, coming in at about 16.95% spent through the first month. These are slightly higher than two-year averages. It's just because the state partnership plan costs are due at the beginning of the year rather than in previous years. Looking at the overtime, the police overtime is coming in at about 8.98%, and roadways and buildings and grounds are still under their, a lot of the amounts. There's nothing in for the snow yet, thankfully. And looking in at revenues, we've received almost 40% of all revenues, which is significantly higher than our two-year average. And current taxes, we've received 50.76% compared to our two-year average of 45.12%. The estimated unassigned fund balance is looking at 9.1 million or 15%, and that's with those numbers of the estimated revenue return to the general fund and the estimated expenditures returned to the general fund. And so that's all I have to report on the financial dashboard. Moving on to the happenings report.
Sure.
You're welcome. The town clerk's office would like to remind all registered Republican voters that there will be a Republican primary held Tuesday, September 10th, for the offices of the town council and the Board of Education to fill a two-year vacancy. Voters are asked to go to their regular polling locations, except for the voters of District Two, who typically vote at Our Lady of Mercy Parish Hall. Those voters are asked to cast their ballots at the firehouse, 77 West Main Street, as the parish hall is unavailable on that date. Polls will be open from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Absentee ballots for qualified voters are now available at the town clerk's office during regular business hours. And going back over what Chairwoman Pickleisi mentioned earlier, the Hot Air Balloon Festival is this weekend. Join them for live entertainment, fireworks, food, crafts, vendors, and a car show. Fireworks will be at 9:00 p.m. on Friday, while the car show is from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, and parking is available at Robertson Airport and Plainville High School. Looking over at the 150th Committee, they will be selling commemorative t-shirts for $15 there at their booth. And the last apartment is the Senior Center. They are hosting an event for chronic back pain on Thursday, September 5th at 1:00 p.m. New guidelines from the American College of Physicians say first-line therapy for chronic back pain should be non-drug treatments, presented by Lisa Murawski, exercise physiologist with Good Life Fitness, sponsored by the Southington Care Center. And on Thursday, September 12th, at 10:00 a.m., they have a Veterans Benefits Workshop. If you're a veteran, please be sure to attend this program with Jason Kupla, Veterans Service Officer from the State Office of Advocacy and Assistance. Jason is very knowledgeable about all the ins and outs of veterans' benefits, and will describe how he can help veterans who are trying to access federal and state benefits, including financial, medical, home care matters, and more. Please sign up in advance at the Plainville Senior Center. This is free and open to the public, and that's all I have to report on.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome.
Does anybody have any questions for either Town Manager Lee's report or Scott's report on his happenings? Just, just an observation regarding the financial closeout for fiscal year 19. 1.03 million, that is generally not what we end up with at the end of the year. Is that correct? Is that not typically where we see our finances ending up? I understand the revenue, because we got a large payment of back taxes that were paid from somebody, but the $605,000, which is under budget for our expenditures, is that something that we typically see, or is this, this is somewhat of an anomaly this year?
It is somewhat of an anomaly because of some of the changes in staff that we've had over the last year.
Regarding the, can you explain a little bit more about the expenditures? You said there were some positions that we didn't fill. There were some other savings in regard to.
We had a part-time position in the.
Energy?
We had a part-time position in the assessor's office, which we did not fill. We had police, we, in the police department, we had some, some officers that were out on workers' comp, so we didn't pay them salary. Workers' comp paid their salary while they were on work, workman's comp, so there's savings there, as well as there was, you know, we had, we had budgeted some officers coming on board that didn't come on, you know, as quickly as, you know, as, as we had them We, we had some savings in the fire department because they came in, their stipends came in under what was budgeted. We had somebody that left roadways, a couple of people who had left roadways, and, and were out on a long-term workers' comp, which, you know, doesn't, again, we don't, that's has savings in the, in the salary line item, and, you know, we get our workers' comp through our insurance. So, so that, that comes in as, you know, that's what pays that. We did have a switch in buildings and grounds that saved some money as well. And, and I also pointed out that we had almost $87,000 in electricity savings from what we had budgeted, mostly due to the, to the fact that we've, you know, we've received revenues for, you know, through our solar panels, you know, we're not using it as, pulling from the grid because of, because of the solar panels that we have in place. Recreation, we had a retirement, we saved some monies with, with that position wasn't, it, it hasn't been filled, it's being, it's being filled right now on a part-time basis. So yes, there's, there were, you know, a number of changes that are listed in your report that was given with respect to those types of personnel changes that have occurred over the last year.
And you said that, is this an unaudited number?
Yes.
This could change once our auditors go through our entire audit process?
Yes, the Finance Director feels that these are conservative numbers, so he doesn't expect that they're, that it's going to go down. He expects that if there's any, any variance, that it would go up, not down.
Thank you for the explanation.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for the town manager or for Scott? Okay. Moving on, we are going into our public comments section of our meeting. During this time of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to that podium, I guess would be best. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? I don't have a list to go off of, so I'm just going to open it up to those who are here, and whoever wishes to speak, raise your hand, and who wants to go first? Look at all these people here. Joanne?
Don't worry, let's get rolling.
All right. Does anybody wish to speak to the council?
There's Lou.
Lou.
The questions have to do with the financial dashboard. The first one is, I went on the system, and I've never found the financial dashboard for June. Am I not looking in the right place? There's a history section there in our menu, and there's no June financial dashboard.
Yeah, we just, we just completed the preliminary report I received last week. This will be posted within the next day or so.
This is the June one?
This is the one that I just went over. No.
No. The July, the July is on system.
The summary will be, will be posted shortly.
Okay. So it will, June will be showing up. Okay, my second and last would be, what I noticed with this new financial dashboard, this one, I'm sorry, this, the latest one, there's no major project report.
We don't have an update on that yet. There, there, we don't, we don't have an up, the Finance Department did not have an update on that for this evening's meeting.
So we could expect to see one at our next meeting in September?
If not sooner.
Okay.
I mean, between vacations and people being out of the offices and, you know, things like that.
And completing year end.
Completing year end stuff.
So.
It's very, it gets very busy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't done so? Anybody else? Mr. Edman?
He can go first if you want.
Go ahead, Cassidy.
You're not Mr. Edman, Jim.
I know I'm not.
Okay.
Who is he? Jim Cassidy, 19 Rockwell Avenue. I want to keep it short and sweet. I want to just thank you guys on this council for all the work that you have done with regard to this trail. You have been faithful listeners to all the presentations that have been made to you over the time that I've been involved with this project. I know that election season is coming up. Some of you will be up for reelection, some of you may choose not to, so we might have a new council. But I'm here to say thank you to you all for what you've done and for, for being so positive about, about how this could improve the town and be willing, willing to listen to both sides of the conversation. I've noticed that about you. You're, you're good at that. Sometimes it may be a little difficult to hear us come on so strongly in favor of it when there are other people who have, have the opposite feeling, but you've been willing to listen to everybody, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. Mr. Edman?
Joel Edman, 63 Alleyberry Lane. No rail, no trail, and no thank you. But thank you, Mr. Bushy, for traveling to Plainville tonight to enlighten us as to what is transpiring with this rails-to-trails, but no rails, design that, from my estimation, most Plainville townspeople do not want. I have spent countless hours pondering the negative effects and possible, and possible negative effects that will impact our wonderful little town of Plainville. Also expressing my views up here at the podium for over an hour and a half, three minutes at a time, due to the three-minute rule. I, I also sent you a registered letter, June 14th, 2019, of which your office received and which I did not get a response to as follows. Dear Mr. Bushy, I am referring, I am regarding the proposed design for the trail in Plainville. This letter will not adequately justify my adamant opposition to the rails, trails gap that has been curiously, carelessly proposed for the town of Plainville. The Pan Am Railroad is still active, running 3.05 miles from north, from Southington. The gap plan extends the length of the trail to at least 5.7 miles, weaving through neighborhoods, roads, wetlands, floodplains, and Norton Park. It also includes a conduit under busy Route 72. Town manager, unlike myself, was not born here. I have no idea why he is so adamant to place this non-revenue bike hiking trail on our local townspeople. The select few that use the other parts of rails-to-trails are already able to pass through Plainville on well-maintained roads and sidewalks. As you know, the cost to construct this trail will be in the millions of dollars, which could be used more appropriately towards Connecticut crumbling roads and bridges. Plainville's annual escalation of property taxes on town residents will only continue to climb when maintenance and repairs will need to be made forever for this non-essential poorly-designed gap trail. I am sure by now you're also aware of the serious incident that involved gangs incurred next to the proposed trail. Innocent residents could have been seriously injured, almost done. In addition, I also oppose an extension of this trail that is being proposed east to west from Connecticut Fast Track in New Britain with another conduit under Crooked Street in Plainville. You have no right to add the madness this trail gap will create for our little nine-square miles of Plainville. The majority of townspeople opposing this endeavor at town council meetings seems to fall on deaf ears. No rail, no trail, and no thank you.
Does anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Sure.
I'm Joel McBane. I live on Bradley Street in Plainville.
And I'm Rachel Bell. I live at 18 Fox Road in Plainville.
And we've been bicycling, bicycling for many, many years, and we were delighted to hear that there are dates attached to this connector, you know, this Plainville connector, because in our writing, we run into a lot of other bicyclists, and they always say, oh, you're from Plainville? When is that part going to be complete? And up until now, we've said, well, we don't know, but after tonight's presentation, now we have some dates to attach. And truly, it will be a great addition to our town, and we thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, ma'am?
Sue DeZura, 172.
Can you just lift it? Thank you.
Sue DeZura, 172 Broad Street. I just want to thank you for listening to the voices of the townspeople, both pro and con. I want to, I don't have prepared talk, but I just wanted to put a pro side to the rail. I live on Broad Street, and I have a history of family in Houston who had property that abided, I'm sorry, was next to a Greenway Bike Trail. It was fabulous. I currently have a son in the Denver area. Colorado is very pro biking. It is an incredible benefit, it draws people into their community, it brings young people in, older people enjoy it, both for walking and biking, so I think it would be a tremendous benefit for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Yes, sir?
My name is Mike Lang, I live at 6 Timber Hill Road, and I just wanted to say that I'm 100% behind the trail through Plainville. I think it would bring tremendous economic and recreational benefits to the town. This past Sunday, my wife and I, again, kind of make our weekly ride up to Collinsville. At 8:30 Sunday morning, the lot on Northwest Drive was overflowing already, and this morning, I'm coming back from the YMCA at 7:00 AM, and there must have been 15 preschoolers with backpacks with supervisors walking up, walking north on the trail, it would be great to see them able to walk south downtown, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you for listening. My name is Carol Nicolucci, and I live at 8 Condeale Lane in Plainville. The trail proposal and the Apple Yard property development are not two separate projects for those of us living on Condeale Lane. For those living on Condeale Lane, the changes represent more and more loss of personal privacy that we treasure, that we cherish, that we invested in when we bought our property, and that we pay property taxes for. We witnessed the deforestation of four and a half acres, yes, private property, of old growth forest on the Apple Yard property space. We've lost the no-traffic privacy a small cul-de-sac provides, it's now a road. Two homes have lost all privacy on the south side of their homes, and 6 Condeale Lane has lost privacy along the front, the south side, and with the trail, anywhere near the canal will also lose personal privacy along the back of her lot. So, that's a complete loss of any privacy that she invested in when she purchased her property. Gone. The effects of these two projects are not two separate things. For us, living in the midst of it, they are certainly not two separated, isolated projects at all. They're one. They're thought of as two projects with different developers, different rules, different budgets, but in our eyes, it's just one big project, wrestling with and devastating the beautiful forested environment those of us living on Condeale Lane invested in. It is one project taking more and more and more of our privacy that we invested in away, and creating more and more deforestation as each project moves along. Please do not remove any more trees. My greatest fear is that removal of trees along the rear of 6 and 8 Condeale Lane will result in a clear line of sight to the industrial park. The obvious conclusion is that our real estate prices would plummet. I would like to propose and encourage the committee to utilize the dotted green line alignment alternative as the path through Norton Park. And I've done some research, when I first moved in, on the trees that are on my property along the canal, tulip trees, the botanical name Lyriodendron tulipifera, they are living along the Farmington Canal, they are a larval host plant for the eastern tiger swallowtail butterfly. I've included some illustrations that I'll hand over to you.
Thank you.
The tiger swallowtail gravitates toward any type of magnolia-type tree. I've included illustrations of the eggs, the larvae, the caterpillar, and the full butterfly here. So, we have, in a sense, a flyway for butterflies along the canal. One of the trees is about 85 feet tall, it's right on the canal, and if the width of the path, as stated here, comes to fruition, then it's going to hit right against that tree. And there'll be an elevated view of our backyards, so privacy is a huge issue for us here. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. May I? Yes, Mark.
Living there is a whole different thing.
Mark Swanson, 78 Metacomit Road, Plainville, and I would like to say, offer a commendation to all efforts that have gone into the planning and design in the past and going forward with the rail trail, and I anxiously look forward to the completion as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Dave?
Dave Albert, I also live in Hollyberry Lane, and, first thing I want to ask, is there a town ordinance against brake, engine braking?
No.
No? There should be.
You can't, it's not a.
Yeah, 10 times a day, sometimes.
We don't have the authorization to have a no-jake braking.
You should have to listen to it.
We do.
Keeps me awake, that's why I'm up here crabby. It's unbelievable, I'm telling you, at least 10, 12 times a day with these big trucks.
I don't disagree with you.
All right. I too would like Mr. Bushy to look at the alternate route. Is it a matter of money on the back of Hollyberry? There's got to be 10 houses back there that are going to be impacted, probably more than that, I'm trying to be conservative, by putting it on the towpath. I guess, I'm guessing it's a money issue.
It's not a money issue, and I think you should give us a chance to lay it out on the towpath. The trail is Farmington Heritage Canal Trail, everywhere else it's along the canal. I, you know, the removal of trees that was mentioned by the previous person that spoke is not going to be nearly as significant as what might be believed. There's going to be a lot of forest. We would basically be re-establishing the towpath that was originally there. There's a lot of forest adjacent to the towpath that wouldn't be touched.
Are you going to have some type of a barrier that they?
Mr. Bushy, before, I know, you're, no, 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 that's fine, but if we could ask you to just finish up with this question, so we can hear, that would be appreciated.
So, I don't.
Going forward, we'll answer the questions, you know, if people have questions for the team that's here, we'll answer them at the end when everybody's done, okay?
Okay.
But we'll finish it up.
So, I don't have survey in the area yet, and we don't have a design, but I'll be looking at the towpath to see what's involved with putting something on the towpath and working with Manager Lee. But my suspicion in creating a 12-foot-wide trail is probably similar to the width that was already there with the towpath. It's not a matter of clearing to create a highway through there. There's a lot of acreage of woods between the canal and the industrial park, so I don't see the amount of trees that we would clear along the towpath, creating a clear line of sight to the industrial park that's not currently there.
Okay, all right.
And that's something, you know, we can certainly look at in the future, when we create an alignment, is how much tree clearing is involved, and which trees would stay and go.
Okay, because I could tell you that we have some new neighbors that have moved in, but the majority of the people, some of them have spoken with you in the past, and they still think that that dotted route is the way you're going to go.
I'm not going to say it's not, it's certainly something that's on the table for discussion, but the primary route we'll be looking at first is the towpath.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your help. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Yes, sir?
Anthony Loria, 18 Perron Road, Plainville. I'd like to know, you ever sat there at the corner of Perron Road, Northwest Drive, on a 4 o'clock in the afternoon, and seen how many of these people are going in the wrong direction up our street where they don't belong, and have to call the police to get people out of there in the middle of the night, because this is all one system? And on the second thing, I'd like to know why Mr. Lee has to lead this gentleman into asking questions about the water? That's ridiculous.
Okay, does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yes, sir?
My name is Peter Antigiovanni, I live at 206 Broad Street, and I thank you for your vision, and I'm sure that there's a large contingent of Plainville residents that echo those same sentiments. Hannah and I just came back from Cape Cod, where we were on the Cape Cod Rail Trail, and I go there, and I've been going there for years, and it's beautiful. But I've lived all my life, and I still have a house in Farmington, and for years, when Cheshire was the only place that you could go to, it was a five-mile stretch, I used to travel to Cheshire from Farmington to do whatever I wanted to do, whether it was run 10 miles, go five, come back. When they finally started building Farmington's portion, it was beautiful, because now we can go north, and I've ridden my bike to the Massachusetts line, I've run in every section of it, and I wish all of the very unhappy people that are speaking here would go to those other sections and check them out, because there are a lot of sections that were not really desirable to live nearby the rail trail, that all of a sudden, the values of those properties have gone way up. And I, sometimes you stop, and as you were, Mr. Bushy was talking about, where there might be some tables and picnic tables, and people stop. It's just such a wonderful community, sense of community that it brings amongst so many people. You don't have to be a world-class athlete to walk on a trail in a beautiful area, beautiful flowers, but it's good for, I've gained 20 pounds in the three years I've lived in Plainville. I used to be able to run a mile to the rail trail in Farmington and go and run, and now I run nowhere. So, you know, before, Avon was the scourge, you know, when were they going to bridge that gap? And now, Plainville is, and I hope that Plainville can finally get this done. And when you said 2024, I was hoping you were going to say 2022 or 2023, but anything you can do is wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Linda Ferguson, 8 Perron Road. I'm not really in favor of this, and I understand the people who want to use the bike path, but it's not in their backyard, and I don't see anybody standing up here saying, please change the alignment and make it in my backyard. We live on a dead-end road, we bought because it was a dead-end road, there was nobody behind us. I have asked the Police Department to please take a look at the traffic on Perron Road and Johnson Avenue. I did this last fall, and I can tell you that they have been very receptive, we see police cars there most mornings, and they are constantly stopping people because they are running through the stop sign. They don't stop, it's not a safe area, we're a little bit isolated, people don't pay attention. You want to bring a bike path up there? I don't see the need for it in our backyard. You know, people are saying the property values are going to go up, and maybe they will, and maybe they won't, but all of us that lived on that street bought because it was a dead-end street, there was nobody behind us, it was quiet. You are going to change the whole neighborhood and what's happening in that neighborhood. I don't think it's fair to us residents. You want the bike trail, stand up here and ask them to put it in your backyard.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Roberta?
Roberta Loria, 18 Perron Road. For the benefit of Carol and the Town Council minutes this evening, I would like to say that I oppose any trail or alignment that will be on, next to, or have an impact on any neighborhood in Plainville, especially Perron Road. As was just explained, we are a dead-end street, we paid more to be there. You do not have the right to take that away from us. Not one of you have gotten up here to say, here, take part of my property. Instead, you want to take somebody else's, because of your greediness and your selfishness and your acts of entitlement. That's wrong. You knew about this for years ago? Why didn't you ask for it years ago? Scott Bushy was kind enough to meet with me, as was explained in the presentation. I thank you for that, and I thank you for the rest of the team for that. I posed a question to him during that meeting. I asked him, what's the economic development to our town? He thought for a minute, he said, well, people are going to buy bike clothes, and they're going to buy bike supplies, but to tell you the truth, we don't know the economic development for our town. So, you want to add tax dollars to a project that there's no way of telling what we're going to get, if anything. One person in this whole project, that was this evening on the Town Council, asked about safety that was avoided. I want to know, how are you going to protect our children where this is going to be going on our bus stops? Because of the internet, we have the, there's the option now where you can easily look on bus stops, know where the bus stops are and the times they're going to be there. How is that safe for our families? People talked today that you were listening. I beg to differ. 69% of the respondents came to you and said no. They were ignored. There's going to be a primary in September. If it doesn't go the way you want it to go, are you going to ignore that as well?
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Hannah, you had your hand up.
Johanna Chapman, 206 Broad Street. I'm here to express my support for the completion of the trail, and all due respect, and I don't mean to be fresh or anything else, but I actually would love it in my backyard, I would love for it to run right through my backyard, I would love for it to be in the woods behind my yard, so that I could jump on the trail and jump off. As Peter mentioned, we do use the trail a lot when we do go to the Cape and here in Connecticut, and people are, they're. And people are, they're running, they're walking, they're, I've never, maybe I'm not looking in the right places, but I'm not seeing people doing graffiti. I'm not seeing people doing anything wrong. I'm seeing people getting fresh air and getting exercise, jumping off the trail maybe to stop. I'm sorry?
Mr. Edman, it's returned, so please don't interrupt while our speakers are at the podium.
I'm sorry. I just, I thought I heard you say something.
I apologize for that.
People do jump off the trail and do, go to local businesses and what have you. So I do see there being a benefit to the community in that regard. As far as, you know, I don't know the exact, you know, with Mr. Bushy, I loved your presentation. I think it was, it was great. I did appreciate the woman, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, about the trees. I would hate to see that happen, so, but I think that we could work together and make it happen somehow that we're not losing the trees, and everybody can benefit from this trail. And I think I have so many things going in my head because so many people spoke before me, but I just wanted to get up and express my support for the trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Nicole?
Nicole Palmieri, 20 Julie Road. I just wanted to give a quick update from the Board of Ed. We have hired an assistant superintendent. His name is David. I'm going to butcher his last name. It's Levanduski, I believe you say it. And...
Thank you.
And he signed his contract today, according to Superintendent LaPage. Also, we have convocation coming up next week, next Wednesday, so we are excited for that. Looking forward to the new school year with Mr. LaPage as our superintendent. I'm sorry, I keep hearing people speak...
Just focus up here. And please, if anybody has comments, hold them until the speaker is done. Just, Joanne? Nobody interrupted? Anybody else? Continue, Nicole.
Thank you. And just to switch gears, I want to thank Councilmen Nazzo and Chris up there for volunteering for the balloon fest. Also, Councilwoman Moranti for volunteering. If anyone would like to volunteer in the food tent, me and Councilwoman Nazzo are in charge of that. So if you'd like to, just let us know. Thanks.
Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? Yes, Catherine.
Catherine Labella, 50 Pierce Street. I oppose the current alignment C of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail or any alignment that negatively impacts Pierce Street and other Plainville neighborhoods. Members of the Greenway Alliance were invited through Facebook tonight to speak with you about their support for alignment C of the gap closure, similar to the invitations to the public hearing during the conceptual phase of planning. Of course, people want to see the trail completed. However, the invitation showed pictures of idyllic woodscapes where rustic bridges and stone steps were built by people along their properties to access the trail. The invitation implied that Plainville residents and taxpayers should not be struggling about the proposed trail location in their backyards. By the way, not one house can be seen in close proximity to the trail in the invitational pictures. In contrast, and let me pass these up to you now. I have a series of Pierce Street pictures to emphasize what it has been like to live on the street since last November, let alone with the impact of the projected trail. These pictures are labeled in the back for your convenience. Among other events impacting residents, they show images from three occasions where the fire department had to access and/or block the street. They show the impact of funeral service parking overrun. The town employees' decisions to route traffic down Pierce Street from 372 on the same day that two memorial services were held at the funeral home. Please look at them carefully. I trust that you can contrast the recreational ride in an idyllic setting with the realities of current conditions on Pierce Street and the future realities of a trail in the same location. As you know, Pierce Street residents have requested that the trail be rerouted from the street during the design phase. I have faith that you will make the right decision for us. I respectfully request that this statement and the pictures become part of the public record along with the council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yes.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. I oppose running the trail through Plainville, period. Logistically, I mean, we're not going to reproduce some really nice trail on Cape Cod or even trails that have been placed on abandoned railroads in Southington or Cheshire in Plainville. That said, let's just, a little aside, what I'd like to ask the council is, where do we stand, in order to change gears here? Where do we stand with the senior center corral group and the preliminary decision to censor us and forbid us from singing any kind of a religious song or a hymn?
It's under review.
It's been under review for about three months. Can I ask, who's doing the reviewing?
We're going to, as soon as there has been a decision or any determination made, we'll announce that.
Oh, who's, who is in charge of reviewing?
We'll announce it, Mr. Spencer, once any determination has been made.
Okay. I'll even find out who's reviewing it, or what standard you're going to use to review it. It's just going to be a big secret, huh?
It's not going to be a secret.
It isn't? Then why can't you tell me?
I just said to you twice, as soon as it is completed.
Well, that was said last month, and that was said the month before.
It's not complete. People have been on vacation. It is under review with the appropriate parties, and we will have some information for you as soon as it's available.
Okay. I mean, it shouldn't take three months to do this, and we go back into session in several weeks, a couple of weeks.
September.
Yeah, probably before the next Town Council meeting.
We'll have it for you as soon as it's ready.
Well, thanks for really being on the ball on this one.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Joanne?
Is that too long? Joanne Edman, 166 West Main Street. Oh, I am not happy. There may be happiness here tonight with this mm-mm-mm trail, fill in the word, starts with, ends with, because it's a want, not a need. It's just for a few that want to barge through people's backyards, front yards. And please, Mr. Bushy, I sent, I also sent you a letter. And I know it was received, and there was no response. Let me read it to you tonight, in case you, it was received and you didn't get to read it. Dear Mr. Bushy, I am strongly opposed, and this is for you too, Carol, for your records, to the design and possible implementation of the proposed alignment C of the trail gap closure, as it is currently being proposed to the citizens of Plainville, Connecticut. Alignment C clearly is invasive and intrusive to the front and backyards of many Plainville citizens and their quiet neighborhoods. I am referring to residents of Perron Road, Pierce Street, Broad Street, Hemingway Street, also Hollyberry Lane. And, yes, and the Norton Park area, which brings in Hollyberry, and bordering many streets. And, oh, the poor tow path, the Mule Hall. Call it what it is, it's the Mule Hall Trail. The Mule Hall Trail is historic. It is hallowed ground, and it shouldn't be desecrated. And like I have said before, it's like driving, these driving the stakes and everything, it's like driving a stake through the heart of history. And the historical society should be furious about this. But you know what? They work so hard at what they're doing, they just don't probably have the strength to deal with all this. Anyhow, recently, furthermore, designing and building the trail through Plainville will cost millions, many scarce dollars that could be better spent on Connecticut's crumbling roads, bridges, et cetera. This folly is a want, not a need, I just said it, for a very few selfish people. I am certain, in this depressed, depressed economic climate, that the feds, the state of Connecticut, and the town of Plainville cannot afford this costly endeavor. Recently, the town of Plainville citizens were subjected to a motorcycle gang brawl at Central Cafe on West Main Street in Plainville. This site is very near to the area where the proposed trail crosses over from the firehouse to Pierce Street. The proposed trail provides an easy route for criminals to scoot out to escape our town in a hurry. This is scary stuff. My sincere, my sincere opinion is, no rail, no trail, and no thank you, like my brother says. If we had an inactive abandoned railroad line going through Plainville, then and only then would the idea of a trail be acceptable.
Joanne, can you sum up your letter?
I can. I can. I just have one little last thing. So far, our...
Close it. I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. I, thank you. So far, our pleas to stop this trail nonsense has fallen on deaf ears. I sincerely hope you will listen to us and put an end to this insanity. That means the state, our town, Town Council.
Thank you.
And you know what? We were really, sincerely, my, yours truly, we were really, you've, you've been having the bicycle and hiker people in your meetings, but you haven't asked the residents to come.
Joanne, your time is up.
Every time I've asked about a meeting, every time I've asked about a meeting, it said the public wasn't invited. Now, I'm mad. I really am. I'm very angry about this whole mm-mm thing. And we don't want a trail. It's going to cost us money. It's going to be a budget line item. It's going to cost the taxpayers money.
Joanne? Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? One more time? Okay. I will close the public comments section. Thank you for your comments. Okay. Moving on to old business. There is no old business tonight, so we'll move on to the new business portion of our meeting. May I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the resolution entitled, "Resolution Establishing Referendum on Proposal Phase Two Road and Related Improvements of Program Bond Ordinance."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to adopt the resolution entitled, "Resolution Authorizing Preparation, Printing, and Distribution of Explanatory Text for Proposed Phase Two Road and Related Improvements Program Bond Ordinance."
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number three?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the revised addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Do we have any other discussions of interest tonight?
I do not.
Oh. Wow. Okay. So before we close, I would like to thank Mr. Bushy and your staff for coming this evening and providing lots of detailed information and background. We certainly appreciate that. I'm sure we'll be meeting again sometime in the future. So many thanks for your time. We will do. Also, thanks to Donald Vaughn and your team for coming tonight to explain about the new approach to water softening in Plainville. We appreciate that, and I'm sure we'll be hearing more from you as it evolves as well. So thanks to all of you for coming this evening. We did learn a lot of information, and we appreciate you coming here. If there are no other items before us, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.